Item would be a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the executive meeting of March twenty eighth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
I can pick in.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it five zero and next we'll go to a data sheet, need a motion to accept.
I make the motion to accept.
We have a second. I got the motion. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it five zero, uh, we have no committee reports. So we'll go to the first new business item, which is PC oh seven dash twenty two Mid America Hotels Corporation.
Good evening, PC oh seven dash twenty two Mid America Hotels Corporation is a request for change in zoning from C four to C eight for a one point seven seven acre tract of land on the south side of Butler Hill Road, north of Mid America Lane and approximately a hundred and fifty feet west of Mid America Plaza. As you recall, this site is in South County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From this aerial, you can see some of the surrounding um commercial development as well as the multifamily residential development to the north and the east. Um, on the preliminary site development plan, it shows a retail building with eight tenant spaces. That's oriented perpendicular to Butler Hill Road. Um, there is no direct access to Butler Hill from the site. The site is accessed via two curb cuts on Mid America Lane, which is a private road. The plan shows two trash enclosures on the northwest and southwest corners of the site and an order pickup window on both the north and south ends of the building, but no drive through ordering station. Um, one freestanding sign is proposed on Butler Hill Road and landscape buffer yards are shown along all the property lines as well as landscape islands within the site. The department is recommending that only one drive through or pickup window on the south side of the building be provided to prevent internal traffic circulation issues around the building. Um, the department is also recommending establishing cross access with lot three during the site development plan review process in anticipation of future development on lot three to the east. Um, this lot is currently vacant, but it's primed for development. Um, electric vehicle charging spaces will need to be provided in accordance with chapter eleven nineteen electric vehicle charging code of the building code. And the department recommends that pedestrian access be provided from both Butler Hill Road and Mid America Lane. And lastly, the department recommends providing only one curb cut on Mid America Lane. Uh, this item is not currently in uh attachment C, the conditions of this report, but can be added in the letter of recommendation. Um, these are the, the architectural elevations that the petitioner had submitted showing a great deal of finistration along the front facade and the sides of the building as well as um brick. The department is recommending approval of this request. Commercial zoning is reasonable and in keeping with the surrounding land use and development pattern. And the C eight procedure allows for site specific conditions of development to protect surrounding permitted land uses. The department finds that the proposed uses are in keeping with the surrounding development and recommends approval with the following conditions of development, limiting the development to one drive through or order pickup window, establishing cross access with lot three to the east, only providing one curb cut on Mid America Lane, providing pedestrian access from Butler Hill Road and Mid America Lane, and requiring architectural review. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion?
This is Bill, uh, I'll make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second? Keith, discussion, anyone? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it five zero and then we'll go to the next item. Uh, with this PC oh eight dash twenty two and oh nine dash twenty two Quick Trip Corporation.
Okay.
If I could just really quickly, Mr. Lawler has joined, so I will reflect as a.
Six.
Thank you, Paul.
Uh, good evening, uh, this is before you is PC oh eight and oh nine dash twenty two Quick Trip Corporation, uh, which is a request for a change in zoning from R two and C two to C two with a C U P for a two point five eight acre tract located on in the northwest quadrant of Butler Hill Road and LeMay Ferry Road. As you can see from the county context map, this parcel is located in, excuse me, South County, uh, just east of Interstate fifty five. And the the aerial provided shows the subject site um uh circled in red and and some of the surrounding land use context. And you can see sort of this closer view that the site is comprised of five separate parcels. Uh, the preliminary side development plan that the petitioner submitted uh with their application and presented uh before you at the the public hearing um shows access uh from Butler Hill Road as as full ingress and egress and access from LeMay Ferry Road as as right in only uh with full egress. And you can see the the locations of the access to the site by the arrows. Um, additionally, a right turn lane um would be constructed from LeMay Ferry Road to Butler Hill Road. Um, is part of a a recommendation of a traffic study that was reviewed by Missouri Department of Transportation and the County Department of Transportation. Uh, the petitioner is proposing a pedestrian path from Butler Hill Road to the site. You can see that uh that sort of the red rectangle um around the pedestrian path. Um, additionally, for the convenience store with fuel pumps use, we're the zoning ordinance will require twenty one parking spaces. And the petitioner is showing fifty four parking spaces, the fifty four includes three accessible spaces. And there is a retaining wall uh with fencing both on top of the fence and in front of the wall. Um, it's largely uh around the the fuel pump area on the west side of the the site. We are recommending some revisions to the site plan. And we're recommending adding a pedestrian path from LeMay Ferry Road, so both rights of ways have a pedestrian path to the site. Um, additionally, parking in excess of one hundred and twenty percent of the maximum required parking is required by the zoning zoning ordinance to be provided on previous pavement, so we would expect to see that as well. Um, we're recommending two electric vehicle charging spaces um to be placed at the site to mitigate mitigate the impact of uh the the previous pavement um to service, you know, visitors to the convenience store. Additionally, the proposed monument signs are too tall. Um, at fifteen feet, staff recommends um monument style only, uh, which is uh a maximum of eight feet in height. The petitioner also submitted a landscape plan uh with their application. The landscape buffer yard show is they are showing a landscape buffer yard along the northern property line, uh, which is adjoins a a R two single family developed parcel um as well as both rights of way. And then they're showing minimal interior parking lot landscaping. Uh, we are making some recommended uh revisions to the landscape plan. And this would include increasing the width of the southern landscape islands. They're they're kind of circled by green boxes um to incorporate those two additional parking spaces on on both sides. Um, so that there are landscape islands at the terminus of the parking rows and both east and west of the C store um as required by the zoning ordinance and then adding um parking landscape islands to the northern terminus of of those rows as well. Uh, the northern buffer yard uh that they're showing is required by the zoning ordinance to have two trees and four shrubs rather than one tree and and four shrubs per twenty linear feet. And additionally, we're recommending requiring Missouri Missouri native plantings um across the site. Uh, I did want to to discuss traffic generation assessment a little bit. It is um a fee that's imposed on certain new developments to help finance the costs of roadway improvements that are necessary to relieve the impact of the new traffic generated by the development. Uh, these funds are used for infrastructure improvements and it's pretty wide ranging. Um, you know, scope of of improvements that I think can be used on some examples are lane widening, uh, signal facilities, bridges, um, things of that nature. Uh, a convenience store with gas pumps um in general generate a significant number of vehicle trips. Um, and and Quick Trip uh certainly does as well, and and this is evidenced by the re- recommendation of the traffic study um that they decided to provide a new right turn lane from LeMay Ferry Road to to Butler Hill Road to accommodate the increase in traffic. Uh, the petitioner would receive credit for cost of improvements to right of ways. Uh, they did indicate at public hearing that they were going to absorb the cost of constructing that right turn lane. So whatever that cost uh ultimately would end up being um would be credited toward their their traffic generation assessment. Um, without T G A, uh, these costs for these infrastructure roadway infrastructure improvements um could otherwise be fully borne by the public. So we are recommending a modified approval of the request, um, PC oh eight twenty two, um, which is the request for the change in zoning to C two. We are recommending approval of C eight in lieu of C two, and then we are recommending denial of PC oh nine twenty two, uh, which is the request for the conditional use permit. Uh, the proposed use, a convenience store with fuel pumps is appropriate at this site. Uh, however, the C A procedure allows the county um to have maximum control over the development. And the the use really does not fall into um sort of the the scope of of what C two um shopping district is designed for, which is for um small businesses that are sort of oriented to the neighboring um residences. Um, the C eight procedure encompasses all C commercial uses um and allows for a development that doesn't fit into a a traditional uh commercial zoning category. Um, some of the conditions of development that we are recommending is is requiring enhanced landscaping as previously discussed. Uh, additionally, limiting the height of light standards to sixteen feet, which matches the maximum allowable height for a light standard in a residential district. Um, requiring a commemorative architectural feature from the Casabon Building, uh, such as what they proposed at public hearing, um, providing two electric vehicle spaces um providing equal pedestrian access from both rights of way. And then additionally, architectural review uh and ultimately approval of of architectural elevations by the cl- planning commission. Uh, some requirements would be thirty five percent finistration um across the convenience store structure, uh, brick and stone cladding um for both the 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 convenience store structure as well as the the columns and canopy of the the fuel pump uh canopy and then equal treatment of all facades. Um, I will note that the petitioner has requested this petition to be held. I believe you all are in receipt of a communication from them. And I would ask that you take an action tonight. Um, and then the the concerns that the petitioner has can be discussed between, you know, the the commission, the planning department, the petitioner. Um, between, you know, the end of this meeting and when we would bring this before you as a letter of recommendation at the at a subsequent executive meeting. Um, so I'd ask for a motion um for approval of PC oh eight twenty two as C eight in lieu of C two and denial of PC oh nine twenty two at this time.
I have a question.
During here.
Can we require them to have charging stations? I thought that the state put a hold on that.
Uh, so go ahead if you want to answer, Jacob.
Sure, it's my understanding that through the, there is no state statute, there's no, there is no statute that has been passed that would preclude the um addition of E V charging stations through a C eight um through any sort of zoning action. Um, you know, chapter eleven nineteen, the county's new E V code um actively excludes um fuel stations such as this. Um, however, the department finds that the addition of two E V stations um is reasonable at this site. And I, in our report, we laid out the rationale stating that um this is a large convenience store that will serve a significant number of uh prepared meals and and sort of food items, and they are showing um, you know, the intent of of tables out at the front. So this, the site development plan does show tables, um, and there is a a strong rationale for why, um, you know, if we're, if our goal of a of a policy is to expand the E V charging network um for electric vehicles, um, and this is a site in which individuals driving down the interstate will be looking for these types of facilities. Um, it's logical to stop at a Quick Trip, pick up some food um and charge their vehicle at the same time. Um, so that is why we are, we are recommending that be um added into your, be added into your ultimate recommendation.
Uh, Wayne, this is Bill. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I, I think I would like to make a motion for a hold. Uh, in the past, we have always afforded the petitioner the opportunity to delay something that they're proposing. And for, in this case, um, I don't know why they're asking for it, but we won't know until they do, and I'd rather have that come back to the commission as opposed to coming back to the, you know, just the staff.
So what I will say is that we have reached out to the petitioner. We have um indicated that um we asked that they set up a meeting with staff so that we can collect um information about their concerns.
And it's fine, Jacob, I think that 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 is something that needs to be done. But I think it, before we make a decision, we ought to have the benefit of that information.
And then after that meeting, I would bring that information to you at a subsequent meeting.
That that would be fine, but I see no reason to uh pass or not pass this uh petition at this time without that information.
Okay, anyone else?
It does look like Mr. Ballard is joining the meeting now.
Okay. Do we have a motion then?
I have a motion for a hold.
Do we have a second? I second the motion. Further discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor of the hold?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And we'll go on to uh letters for approval. First one's PC thirty six dash twenty one Moto Inc.
So if if the commission is okay, I would like to uh do PC oh five twenty two Melville School District first.
Sure.
This uh, this letter of recommendation is consistent with the commission's uh recommendation of approval from their March fourteenth executive meeting.
Okay, um, we have a motion on the letter?
Make a motion for approval.
Second, anyone?
I'll second it, state.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. And then we'll go back to uh thirty six dash twenty one Moto Inc.
So this is PC thirty six dash twenty one Moto Inc., which is a request for a change in zoning from the F P M one M three F P M three to M three and F P M three for a roughly three acre site at the intersection of Interstate two fifty five and Coke Road. Um, so at the March fourteenth executive meeting, the commission uh voted to approve the request in the, since then, the staff have prepared um a letter of recommendation for approval with a uh, you know, a attachment C, conditions of development. We have forwarded those conditions of development to the petitioner and they have indicated um that they are all right with the conditions as drafted. So what the letter says, it does permit the use as as requested, a convenience store with a drive through, gas pumps, an automated tunnel car wash, as well as the two existing advertising signs um on the site. We did uh write some conditions for architectural review, including that all sides of the building be treated equally and fully clad in uh a mixture of a high quality materials that could include brick and stone and that the columns of the fuel canopy also match uh the convenience store in the same style. Uh, other conditions are enhanced landscaping at the exit of the car wash structure, which is a little bit uh removed from the canopy and the C store. And then additionally, um, since there is some grading proposed along the Martigny Creek um sort of banks, we are asking for um a low maintenance, no mo native grass uh mixture to be replanted in that area to mitigate the the grading that would occur. Uh, additionally, we are requesting that the sign along Coke Road be monument in style. The commission may recall that there were two signs proposed, one along Coke Road and one um oriented towards the interstate. We are recommending that the sign along Coke Road be monument in style. Um, with that, uh, the the letter is consistent with the commission's recommendation for approval based on um the reutilization of this site. So I would ask for a motion at this time.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second motion.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it seven zero. And um next we'll go to correspondence, one item, PC eighty five dash seventy eight, John Wing DDS.
This is a um request to amend the permitted uses in the C eight ordinance for PC eighty five dash seventy eight John Wing DDS um to allow professional services at the site. As written, the ordinance only permits dental offices. Um, and the petitioner indicated that the principal use would be a law office, but they would also offer professional services such as accounting, bookkeeping, or financial planning. Um, the department is recommending approval of this request, noting that the requested uses are less intense than the current dental office use at the site and no site improvements are proposed. Um, so at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
We have second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it seven zero. And we'll go on to uh site plans, we've, we've got two. First one, seventy seven dash eighty five Noel Espin.
Yes, so this is um the, it's a family forward site. Um, the site is fully developed, they're adding a a playground. Um, so the playground will be up here in this kind of northeastern portion of the the overall site. Um, they're removing existing parking spaces. Um, additionally, they're adding significant landscaping along Lindbergh Boulevard as well as throughout the site surrounding the existing buildings and within the larger parking areas. And um this is also just kind of a general spec plan for the playground. Um, so at this time, I'd like to request a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Who's that?
It's Keith.
All right.
Second, Bill Ballard.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it seven zero. And um, I believe that's it, is anything else?
One more, one more site plan.
Oh, Costco wholesale.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is for um PC ten dash oh one Costco wholesale. This is the the fuel, the Costco fueling area, which is in the southwest portion of the site. Um, they're adding five additional fueling pumps, um, two sided fueling pumps and expanding the pavement a little bit, um, as well as adding significant landscaping around the fueling pumps in the form of landscape islands. So I would like to request a motion.
Do we have a motion?
I make the motion for approval.
Second emotion.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it seven zero, and I believe that's it, uh, anything? Else?
For the, um, I don't know whether we had it on there for the good of the order. Um, the only things that were um of 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 interest for the commission uh to to perhaps uh begin considering is um, the first one is we've chatted a bit about um whether the commission would can, would like to move forward on um amending its bylaws. Um, we've, so we've brought that up, uh, I think that's been brought up at several, at several meetings. Um, and so that's something that will, um, you know, we we ask whether that's still um something that the commission would like to do. And if so, we can set a um a meeting of a committee of the whole, um, if it's, if if it is the will of the commission to move forward with that process.
I did not hear from anyone other than Keith Taylor last week. So I'm I'm gathering that the uh, the will is to put this on hold for a while. And maybe we do it when we uh begin to meet in person again, take it up then.
Well, that leads into the next conversation, which is, um, as the commission knows, um, there are, you know, the opportunity to meet in person um is 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 out there. Um, so it is the, you know, at at any point that the commission would like to direct staff to consider and start planning for that, um, just let us know. Um, you know, we can start planning for that. We do need some lead time, we would want to work with um the the staff of the county council um to make sure that we can uh understand and use their, the technology. There's been a lot of technology changes in the chamber since uh the commission last held a a public event um in person. So, um, you know, I just want to throw that back out there um for the commission's um consumption that um when you are ready to move into person uh to give us some lead time and and we can uh start planning for that.
Any thoughts from anyone on uh going back in public?
Wayne?
Yeah.
Keith, Keith here, yeah, I I think uh as a whole, I I would like to do that, I believe. The public would probably enjoy that too, and I I don't think our meetings would be quite as long if we did have them in person. It seems like it drags out more on the public hearings with the Zoom meetings here.
Okay.
It's just my opinion.
Anyone else?
Keith, this is Bill, uh, did you say you're in favor of public or not?
I am, I am, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sure.
Okay, good, because I also would be in favor of pu- public uh in person uh meetings. I think it gives everyone the opportunity to uh uh not only listen, but to feel the pulse of the people who are talking.
This is Bill Ballard, I agree with both of you guys, I I like to do it in public. But I'm also uh, on my mind, this COVID thing hasn't gone away and seem like our uh surrounding states are beginning to implement those masks again. I don't know what the county is 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 seeing of that. Uh, Jack, do you have any in in any uh input into that from my health department?
You know, the, from, you know, we just continue to hear the same um that from the health department, um, you know, masks are not currently required. Um, well, I have not heard anything, um, you know, anything else in particular about that, about that issue. Um, and you know, it it and it is the will of the commission at this point. Um, you you know, if and if you guys want to wait some more time, um, you know, but I don't have anything, I don't have any sort of, you know, special knowledge about whether that, whether there's going to be any changes to the mandates or anything of that nature.
Okay, because you, I I'm sure you've heard it's been on the news about the two states beside us, all of those guys are implementing masks again. And and some people are implementing indoor mask for eating again. It was just announced again today on the news I heard earlier. So I I don't know, but I I I'm like those guys, I do feel you get the better pulse for the people when you do meet in person. But uh, uh, with some of the people on the commission spouses having issues and some of us uh individually having issues, uh, I think that's a legitimate concern and something that should be weighed, you know? But uh, that's my opinion.
I see.
You said you needed at least uh a two month lead time?
We we would need probably two to three months um before the commission, um, you know, that way we have plenty of time to work with um staff um so that we understand the process, so that that first time that everyone gets back in in person that we are um, you know, it's as um seamless as possible, that first time. But the first time I, you know, there's probably guaranteed going to be some sort of hiccups and we're sort of remembering what it's like to be back in person after more than two years at this point. So we do need some time to to sort of prepare for that.
Okay.
If it's not, you know, and I I was not expecting a decision from the commission this evening, um, unless you all want to make a decision. Um, I just want to, you know, always throw that out that it's at your discretion to to decide when to do so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, Wayne, that I do agree. Sounds like my grandson is a little upset right now, but at any rate, I I do agree that it is, I would like to meet in person. I don't think I'll get a better feel from the public. I think I got that over the the Webex meetings pretty well. But I think you do, I I don't know, perhaps we could keep a better have a better handle on time as far as when, during the public hearings. Other than that, I mean, I don't, I'm cool with it. I'm good with meeting in person. So as far as I'm concerned, we can start the process two or three months. Sounds like it's plenty of time to to prepare and to see which way the COVID thing is going. That kind of gives us a little, little leeway time.
What do you think? Two, three months?
But then he says it's gonna take us two or three months before they
Like a nine one date, maybe? Right. Then we also know where the the virus is going at that point.
Right. Yeah, I think if we start preparing now and it takes two to three months, we can always reevaluate whether or not we want to implement. The process would, that that needs to be done could proceed now and then make a decision two to three months from now, whether or not we want to implement.
Does that work for you, Jacob?
Yes, so if it's the, if the commission would like, we can now, did you, so I mean, we are looking at July sometime, considering July, or would you, I I may have heard you say Mr. Hilsinger nine one, so maybe September, that's a little bit longer. I'm, and we're open to to sort of going either direction.
August, September, unless somebody's got something different.
So if September is is planned for September after the summer, that's, that gives us a, that gives us plenty of time and a deadline to sort of be ready for that.
Unless somebody's got one, something different.
Now that'll get some of the holidays out of the way and some of the summer months out of the way, so we should know where the COVID is going.
Labor Day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so if it is the, if that's the will of the commission, staff will begin, we'll start thinking about and and reaching out to to plan for in person public hearings and in September. If it's, the commission doesn't mind, you know, the same days that we have public hearings with executive meetings. I suspect it would be appropriate that those are in person together. But on, if we ever do have days where we have standalone executive meetings, you know, if executive meetings still work over Zoom so that so that everyone doesn't have to come to Clayton for that, that's, you know, also within your
We can deal with that down the road.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything to add? Okay, that's it, I think. So with that, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion for adjournment.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we were adjourned for twenty six minutes. Be back at seven.